Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September 23rd, 2025 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees to order. On behalf of the Richland Board of Trustees, I'd like to welcome each and every one of you to our regular board meeting. As always, we are grateful for the continued engagement and support of our students, families, staff, and community members. Tonight, we look forward to conducting the important business of Richland 2 and working together to ensure that we remain a stellar school district committed to excellence in education. We do appreciate each of you for your presence and your participation, and we thank you for joining us this evening. Will you now join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I'd also like to take this time to just recognize two of our board members who will be joining us shortly, and that is our Board Chair Angela Nash and our Board Secretary, Dr. Monica Elkin Scott. Tonight's agenda has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
I move to approve the agenda for the September 23rd, 2025 Board Meeting.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis. I'm sorry. Yeah, the motion has been made by Mr. Dennis. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis and seconded by Mr. Trapp to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, board members, please vote. The vote is five yes and two not present. The motion passes. We will move, we will now move into item 4.1, the Executive Session. May I please have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Porter?
I move to approve the, oops, hold on one second. I move to convene in Executive Session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, breach of contracts, employment recommendations, and certified releases, requests for contract ratification, receipt of legal advice with a litigation update, personal matter related to the superintendent's evaluation, and receipt of legal advice for the superintendent's evaluation.
Do I need to restate that?
Okay. I move to convene in Executive Session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, requests for contract ratification, receipt of legal advice, litigation update, personal matter related to the superintendent's evaluation, and receipt of legal advice, superintendent's evaluation.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded, seconded by Mr. Dennis to go into Executive Session. Is there any discussion? Ms. Porter, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, seeing that there is no discussion, board members, please vote. The vote is five yes, two not present. The motion passes. The board will now enter into Executive Session.
I'm here. Sorry, guys. Oh, she's there. Okay. Sorry, you all, just for note, Ms. Porter is on the phone with us, but she is here, present with us, so, all right. Item 4.9, may I have a motion to end Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that we adjourned Executive Session at 6:35 and resume public session.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mr. Dennis to end Executive Session at 6:35 and resume public session. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, Mr. Trapp, can you let me know if that is correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, board members, please vote.
I'm voting in the affirmative.
Oh, thank you for that. All right, the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving on to item 5.1, we will now have, may I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington?
I move to approve the consent agenda for the September 23rd, 2025 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, Ms. Washington, is your motion correct?
Yes.
All right. Okay, board members, please vote. Oh, Ms. Porter, are you still there? Oh, I think she's coming in person, so she, she should be here soon. So, yeah, we go ahead and do it, the vote. The vote is six yes, one not present. The motion passes. Moving on to item 6.1, Special Recognitions, this, oh, sorry, SC-SBA Champion for Public Education Presentation. This agenda item is, in this section, special, special recognition of the SC-SBA Champion for Public Education, Ms. Tamika Washington. Sorry, y'all, gotta clean my glasses.
Good evening, board members and members of the public. Here with us tonight is the South Carolina School Board Association President Charles, Charles Govan. He has served in nearly every leadership capacity with the South Carolina School Board Association, including President-elect, Secretary, Treasurer, and as the Regional Director over the past 13 years. He has also served on the South Carolina School Board Association Insurance Trust Board. This is his 24th year, serving on his local board in Darlington, South Carolina. Mr. Govan is here on behalf of the Association with a special presentation for Richland School District 2. I present to you all, Mr. Charles Govan.
Now, good evening. I'm here to afternoon, this evening, to say to Richland 2 Board Chair Ms. Nash, members of the Richland 2 Board, and Superintendent Dr. Moore, thank you for the opportunity to make a special award presentation on behalf of the South Carolina School Boards Association. It is a pleasure for me to visit with you this, this evening, especially to make a presentation like the one where my friend and Region 8 Representative Nikki Porter serves. And in Nikki's absence, I would say to you that she has done a great job with us, and we've enjoyed working with her. Now, I'm sorry she's not here in, in person this evening. At this time, I would like for Ms. Nash and Dr. Moore to join us down front to present this award tonight. At this time, I would also ask that Ms. Owens, who is the Director of Communications and Strategic Partnerships, join us as well. This award is being given to the H&R Block, and in their absence, I've asked her to step, to stand in to accept this award, and she can later get the award to them. First, we say thank you. Thank you for the wonderful collaboration with District, Richland School District 2. This is a partnership which displays your dedication and commitment to success in public school children. The link between you and the school district serves as a model for other school districts in our state, and is why the South Carolina School Boards Association is proud to recognize and honor H&R Block as the Champion for Public Education. I am not going to read all of this by design, expecting since H&R Block is not here. However, I will say to you that they have done a lot of work with this district, and since 19, since 2017, has sponsored the Rookie Teacher of the Year Block and monthly awards, and the Rookie Rookie of the Year Teacher Award, honoring, providing not only public recognition, but also tonight, I'm sorry, also tangible rewards such as monetary gifts, collaborative events, and professional perks. Having said that, I'm going to present this award on behalf of the School Boards Association to Ms. Owens, and Ms. Owens in return can give it to me.
Thank you, Mr. Govan, and congratulations, Ms. Holmes and Ms. Wilcock. We are very proud of your achievements and wish you continued success. And also, that is actually where Ms. Porter is. She's doing some Region 8 business today, but will be joining us, I think she said, in person shortly. All right, moving on to item 7.1, we will now move on to public participation. We have two individuals signed up to address the board. You will be given three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear an audible tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Before we begin, I want to, will remind everyone that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in district policy. All right, our first speaker is Ms. Felicia Jones.
Okay, sorry. Okay, thank you for letting me speak, speaking to the school board, but to the community and the parents that aren't here. So, today, I'm asked, we are interjecting for the class action lawsuit. With the class action lawsuit due to the chemical pollution, I did go to DHEC, as my friend said, you can get these kits to test your water at home, as well as I'm asking the school board to get some randomly and give it to different children. They, I spoke to the gentleman in charge of PFAS testing kits. They do not have them yet, but I'm trying to get them in touch to give you those as well. This is just for regular drinking water and well water, testing for the PFAS, which is linked to the chemical pollution. So, with that, also, I was saying, we settled $1.29 billion case with Scout Motors. I know you're saying, what do you have to do with that? I'm asking you because of the pollution and the 22 active cases to ask Scout Motors to run a high-speed rail line from Savannah Airport to Charlotte, Charleston to Atlanta with the state. So, every child has access to come into Columbia throughout the state and use our colleges and at higher education systems. That also creates generational jobs for South Carolina, okay? Giving people access to get to and fro, bringing revenue into our community, okay? So, that's for our youth. That's for the next generation, not for us sitting here, because I'm not sure that I will be able to write that or not. So, my other thing is with the guns. I asked you about doing the stick test, making it, you don't really have to do a stick test. It's more like just incorporate the law, where you say, if you take this medicine, you can't drive, just incorporate, if you take a certain level of certain meds, you cannot purchase a gun. Nobody with certain mental illnesses should have access to a gun. Again, I said, out of 500 mass shootings, and this is CD statistics, 125 are done by people on mental meds. Okay, today, gun violence is the number one death for our youth in America. It used to be car accident. It's no longer. It's gun violence. It's up to us as the adults and the parents to put barriers in place to save our kids, okay? Because they're just out here on mental medication with a gun, they're more than likely their negligent parent, and yes, I said it, left somewhere, or didn't lock it up, or left them access to. Okay, so these are the things I'm asking for again. Thank you for your time. I will be bringing more things back to try to help you get the things done for the class action lawsuit and for this gun. Also, in Florida, Massachusetts, and Texas are using drones, and you can use the military for the drones. The military has the drones. They can pilot program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is going to be Cameron Fulton. Cameron Fulton? All right, does not look like Cameron's here, so we will move on to item 8.1, Student Appeals. May I have a motion regarding student appeals? Oh, I'm sorry, let me just tell you guys, we're going to 8.0, voting on Executive Session items. So, the first up is 8.1, Student Appeals. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Dennis?
I move to grant the appeal for student number one to attend Blythewood Academy for 90 days.
All right, the motion has been made by Mr. Dennis. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis and seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? All right, once the motion is on the screen, Mr. Dennis, if you will just let me know if that is correct? Is your motion correct?
That's correct.
All right, board members, please vote.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Porter?
I vote in the affirmative.
Oh, thank you. You're back.
Sorry about that.
You're fine. And Ms. Williams has raised her right hand. She's also voting in the affirmative. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Next up is item 8.2. May I please have a motion on the student admission request into the district's adult education program?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp?
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students one through six.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Ms. Washington. Mr. Trapp, oh, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, Mr. Trapp, can you let me know if that motion is correct?
It is correct.
All right, board members, please vote.
I vote in the affirmative.
Me too. Did it say I voted yes? Okay, yes, I see it. All right. The motion, oh, sorry, the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving on to item 8.3, may I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams?
I move to approve, I move to, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
You're fine.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Williams and seconded by Ms. Washington. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, Ms. Williams, when your motion appears on the screen, if you will just confirm that that is correct? All right, that motion being cor, oh, sorry, the, the motion's by Ms. Williams. All right, okay. Oh, you said it did? Okay. So, all right, everyone, please vote. All right, now, we are going to-
I vote in the affirmative.
Oh, yes, Ms. Porter's in the affirmative. Thank you. All right, the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Okay, moving on to item 8.4, Request for Contract Ratification. May I please have a motion regarding a request for contract ratification?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington?
I move to ratify the contracts for Power School Group LLC and Magic School Incorporated.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, Ms. Washington, when the motion appears on the screen, if you will just let us know if that is correct? All right, board members, please vote.
I vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. Okay, the motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move on to item 8.5, As Needed Items for, discussed in Executive Session. May I have a motion, please, for the items discussed in Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington?
In light of the superintendent's positive performance evaluation, I move that the board increase the amount of the superintendent's annuity contribution by 2%.
Is there a second?
A second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Ms. Williams. Ms. Washington wants, oh, sorry, is there any discussion? Oh, sorry. No discussion? All right, we're gonna wait for that motion to get over there. All right, Ms. Washington, is that correct on the screen?
Yep.
All right, well, board members, please vote, and as you guys can see, that woman has appeared, Ms. Porter has now joined us. I don't know how she got here that fast, but she is now here with us, so, we might need to give her time, but if so, if you want to hand vote, that's fine as well. All right, the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving on to item 9.0, we will now discuss or go over items, actions requested in items 9.1, Proposed Revision to the 2026-2027 School Year Calendar. May I please have a motion regarding the proposed revision to the 2026-2027 School Year Calendar?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Washington?
I move to revise the 2026-2027 School Year Calendar in the following manner. Changing, change December 21st, 2026 to a holiday, change July 28th, 2026 to a workday, and designate October 9th, 2026 as an inclement weather makeup day.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? All right, there being no discussion, Ms. Washington, can you just confirm if that is correct? All right, board members, please vote. All right, the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Moving on to item 10.0, New Business Action Requested. We will now do selection of delegates for the South Carolina School Board Association's Delegate Assembly. May I please have a motion regarding the selection of delegates for the South Carolina School Board Association's Delegate Assembly? Do we have anybody making a motion? Oh, oh. I think we have two. Oh, okay, we're just, oh, yes. Oh, we gotta do a ballot? Okay.
You don't need to do a ballot. You need to nominate.
Okay, we'll, we'll just choose them.
You nominate, and if it's more than what you nominate, then you do the ballot.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate two people.
Okay.
Mr. Gary Dennis and Ms. Nikki Porter to serve as the delegate.
You'll have to do it one at a time. Oh, okay, one at a time.
I want to nominate Mr. Gary Dennis to serve as a delegate.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Washington, seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion?
Ask Ms. Gary Dennis if he's willing to serve.
Mr. Dennis, do you want to accept?
Yes, I accept. I have attended the conference, I am going to accept.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dr. Okay, thank you, thank you, Dr. Scott. We don't want him to say no, we just couldn't go forward. All right, well, the motion has been made by Mr. Washington, Ms. Washington, and seconded by Mr. Trapp, and Mr. Dennis has accepted. So, once that, and there's no discussion, anybody? All right, all right, once that motion is on the screen, we'll just make sure that it is correct. Oh, do we need to do that? Oh, sorry. Oh, we need to? Okay, yeah, okay. All right, board members, please vote. Okay, so you said we need to, we're only gonna have two? Board members, please vote if you have it. I'm the one who have it.
Got it. It was me.
All right, the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Dennis. All right, may I have another motion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that we select Ms. Nikki Porter to serve as a delegate with, to serve as a delegate.
Okay.
That's it.
Ms. Porter, do you accept? Oh, I'm sorry, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, and now, Ms. Porter, do you accept? All right, is there any discussion? Okay, we will, okay, Ms. Williams, is that correct? All right, board members, please vote. The motion passes. We will now move on to item 11.0, new business, no action requested. The first item 11.1 is proposal elementary attendance line adjustment. The agenda item in this section is a proposal regarding the elementary attendance line adjustment policy. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask Mr. Emmanuel Myers, Director of Planning and Operations, and his trusted partner, Grant, to come and do a presentation to the board. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and superintendent. My name is Emmanuel Myers, the Director of Planning and Operations, and I have with me James Hamilton. He goes by Grant, my GIS specialist. This evening, I will present the proposed adjustments to our attendance lines, including revisions made during the community input sessions. Our parameters, our goals have remained clear throughout this process. Balance enrollment at schools along the I-20 corridor, keep neighborhoods and subdivisions intact, minimize disruption to transportation routes, improve traffic flow where feasible, and draw attendance lines that anticipate enrollment changes over the next five to 10 years. This slide depicts our 2025-2026 school data for Day 11, with the revised schools identified in the proposal. This is our original version. In our original proposal, 12 schools and approximately 1,029 students were projected to be impacted. The areas projected to be impacted are shown, has hash marks on the map, and correlate with the number. For example, Area 1 was proposed to change from Windsor to Joseph's Keel. However, feedback gathered during the community input session prompted us to revisit our plan. This slide highlights the work of our district and communications team to ensure our community knew about the attendance line changes. Information was posted on our website, social media, Parent Square, and local media, and through word of mouth. We had over 437 responses to our survey, with the majority of the respondents not being affected. We also included three community input sessions at Pontiac, R2I2, and Polo Road. We had 30 to 40 people come to those sessions. I would like to thank the board members, school administrators, and district leadership for attending these sessions and helping to address questions and concerns regarding the proposal. In summary, the feedback we received primarily was very individualistic and was more centered on questions regarding their child. These included, can we stay at our school? What about choices in Magnet? I have a rising fifth grader, can they stay? Will class sizes get larger? These questions will be addressed in our FAQs that will be communicated to our families. Rising fifth graders will have the option to be grandfathered in their school they currently attend, along with their siblings, reducing disruptions for their families. Other feedback that helped guide our recommendations are, our families love their schools. This is a testament to our faculty and staff at the school these students currently attend. They also expressed concerns regarding transportation and the routes. This is our original proposal, and I will flip back and forth once I explain the revisions. After reviewing the community input sessions and survey results, we refined our approach. The revised proposal reduced the number of impacted schools from 12 to 10, decreasing the number of impacting students from 1,029 to 660, while removing Jackson Creek Elementary and LW Connor from the proposal. Additionally, let me highlight a few other changes. Go back. And members of the board, you have the printouts of both the original and the revised in front of you while I just talk about the changes. Area 1 on the original was modified. Area 2 and Area 3 were deleted from the original proposal. Area 4 was modified, as well as Area 5. Area 6 was deleted. Area 8 was expanded, and Area 11 was reduced. Those not mentioned stayed the same. This slide highlights the neighborhoods impacted by the revised attendance line adjustments. Here you see the projected impact of the revised proposal. One keynote, based on the projections for 2026-2027, Polo Road Elementary is projected to be at 101% capacity. This increase is due to feedback from residents of the neighborhoods that, under the original proposal, would have moved to Windsor, driving past Polo Road, but will now remain at Polo Road. These projections are based on Day 11 from the data from this year, and will be updated again Day 90 of the enrollment year later, this year. As a reminder, these projections are for next school year, and they are based on future enrollments, changes we see taking place over the next several years. As more data becomes available, we will continue to update our projections. I completed the next steps. Throughout this process, the district held three community input sessions, conducted a survey for families unable to attend, collected and reviewed all feedback. Tonight, we are presenting the final recommendations to the board. Our next steps, continue communications with families, and prepare for the second board reading on October 28. This concludes our presentation of the proposed attendance line adjustments with the recommended revisions for board consideration. Thank you, and I will now turn it back over to our superintendent, Dr. Moore.
Thank you very much. Board members, we appreciate the feedback that we receive from our families and from the community, and as you can see, that's where the adjustments came that was presented tonight, and at this point, we'll open it up for any questions.
All right, board members? Yes, oh, Mr. Dennis.
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you for all the work you guys and gals have done for this. I was fortunate to attend all three meetings, so I got to talk to a lot of parents, but one thing I wanted to point out was, is there any, I want to ask, is there any way that I can get a copy of all the questions that was submitted? I would love to read through every one of them, please.
Yes, Mr. Dennis, we can provide those to you.
Ms. Porter?
Yes, I just want to clarify, so the original proposed map, was that the one that the parents had at our in-person sessions? Okay, so that means some, there are some parents who may have come to a school, checked their address, and weren't affected, but now that the changes have been made, they may be affected now?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Did to the schools and also with the communications through the same avenues that we use to push out the original.
Okay. I'm not sure what the lift would be, but noting that those that commented, he said majority of those were those that were not affected. So my concern is that the parents that showed up in person that were affected are, in their minds, thinking they're not affected, they're not gonna open up that Parent Square message that comes in the next couple of weeks or anything else because they've put it behind themselves. I'm wondering if those that are now affected with the new map could get something in writing, maybe even a little, something small, that says, please review the revised maps. It's just a suggestion.
Ms. Porter, the majority, as you said, went down, and what they actually did not, they're staying at their zone school. So, there's maybe 20 kids that, so we'll do, the plan, and Mr. Myers wasn't exactly, in second time, was not direct of exactly, but the plan is to send those 20 direct messages that you're now gonna be zoned for X school. Majority are not being, more are not being affected, they're actually staying at their school.
Got it. So, you say you're gonna direct that message. My request is that they have it in writing-
Yes.
-because they may be the parents that won't check it digitally, and if it's only 20, it sounds like it's not a heavy lift.
Yeah, and just as, could you go back one slide, maybe? No, one, this one. Thank you. So you see we're under the third bullet on next step, says direct communication with families affected by the change. We'll also, before that, do a direct communication to those families by the change as well. One, to show them again what they're doing, and then secondly, after the second reading, if you guys, whatever your steps you take, of all their options they have, what their new zone school is, choice, their option, all those different things will be done. So they'll, the next steps is to go right to the families that are affected currently, as well as so people know if you're a new family, now your zone is X instead of Y.
Thank you.
They'll get with the realtors and everybody else.
I appreciate that, thank you. And I assume that this new map is on our website as well?
Yes, we're gonna-
Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions? Any more questions, everybody?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Just want to say thank you guys for the time and effort that you actually put into this. I had an opportunity to attend one of the meetings, and you guys were there, available to address any questions that we had. At the meeting, I actually attend, I think it was probably four to six parents that showed up. I mean, we have over 29,000 students, so my take is that if parents are truly concerned and have questions, they have ample opportunity to do that, as well as take the survey. So what you guys have presented is well thought out, and it was time consuming, so I just want to say congratulations and thank you on a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and I'll just echo those sentiments, so thank you guys for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on now to item 11.2, the 2024-2025 Achievement Report, Elementary and Middle Schools. This agenda item is in the section, oh, sorry, yes. Okay, so Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask our Senior Chief Academic Officer and our, Jen Morrison, and our Executive Director of Accountability, Dr. Jennifer Coleman, to come and present to the board. See, they also have their additional crew available. We have Mr. Arthur Newton, our Executive Director of Elementary Education, Dr. Jerome Davis, the Executive Director for Secondary Education, and Ms. Queenum McLaughlin, our Executive Director for Special Education.
All right, thank you for the introductions. Dr. Moore, I would like to start us off by saying that Richland 2 has made some meaningful progress as a district in both math and ELA, in elementary and middle school during the 24-25 school year. But I know that this is due to many years' worth of work and the hard work of our students, their families, our teachers, principals, and our district staff, the crew. And so, we know that in Richland 2, we focus on each child and what each child needs to move forward. As a senior chief, I'm always looking also at the district level, how's the district serving our students? And so I look for things like increases in percentage points for all students. I look at the number of schools that are improving out of all of our schools. I look at increases by grade levels and decreases and does not meets on SE Ready, and we're making moves in all of those areas. So this is a short presentation, we got eight minutes, I'm gonna get out of here, but I want to make sure that the board is aware that we want to be as transparent as possible. So I'm gonna feverishly be taking notes on questions and making sure that we can share the information that needs to be shared with you and also with the public. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Coleman.
Good evening. Well, I'm so excited to be here tonight. All right, so we're gonna jump right in. So this presentation is about, am I gonna break anything if I move it? Okay, you won't charge me if I do it right. All right, okay. The presentation tonight's gonna be about SE Ready, which is the big test that our elementary and middle school students take. This was developed to be aligned to South Carolina standards, and it's switched to, we switched to all grade levels being paid, going computerized, 23, 24, there's four levels. The highest is exceeds expectations, followed by meets expectations, approaches and does not meets. We were asked to give, we were asked to give a definition of each of the areas. So for exceeds expectations, it means the student is well-prepared for next grade level. Meets means the student is prepared. Approaches is needs additional academic support. Does not meet means substantial academic support is needed. We're gonna look at three different views tonight, and this is a little different than how we've done it in the past, but I think it's really important to think about this from three different viewpoints this evening. When we look overall at the grade, at the breakdown of categories by grades, you can see on the axis, there's third, fourth, fifth through eighth grade. Then we have the four levels across the top, so you can take your time to look across those and see where we are as a district. Here's where I really want to start. We have done this slide for years. It's the percent of students who are approaches and above for ELA over five years. There's a lot of stuff on the screen, okay? So if we look at the axis going down, it's telling us the grade levels, and if we go across the top, it's looking at five years. Why do we look at five years? Because sometimes things that happen in a year are an anomaly. What we really want to see when we're looking at growth is sustained growth over time. So we look at five years. So when we look at ELA, approaches and above, we can see that for four of the six grade levels, I'm sorry, five of the six grade levels, that there were increases in the students' approaches and above over two years and both over five years. So, a lot of people say, why do you throw approaches in here, John? It's kind of weird that you throw it in here because the state is looking at meets and exceeds, and I accept that question. Two answers for it. One is this, South Carolina has often been known to have some of the most rigorous state standards and most rigorous state assessments in the nation. Now, there's a good point in this with our approaches category- Now, there's a good point in this, with our approaches category, kids can be anywhere from the 30th percentile to the 70th percentile. Just going to take you back to that stats class none of you wanted to take in school, all right? If you're above the 50th percentile, you are doing better than half of the students like you across the nation, so you're already above average. So I would say that some of those kids in approaches are actually doing pretty well, okay? Now, the other thing that's really important about this slide is if I'm telling you that we have increased in the majority of the grades over five years, what that tells me is we have less students who are in the does-not-meets category, and that's where the real money's at, right? We're taking our most educationally sensitive kids and we're moving them up, because the more kids we have in the top three categories, the less kids we have in that bottom category. Now, I do also present it the way that the state likes it presented, which is just looking at meets and exceeds. Those are considered the two levels to be on grade level standards. You can also see that we had an increase in the students in the meets and exceeds, and this is where I just get so excited, you guys, because think about it. We decreased kids in the does-not-meets category and we increased kids in meets and exceeds. So what we're trying to move toward is a tail that goes this way. I will tell you, right after the pandemic, we were becoming tail-heavy on both sides, and it was absolutely devastating for all of us, for teachers, for kids, for parents, for district office staff. We're starting to see some of that level off now. We're not done, don't get me wrong, we'll never be done, but we can start to see that what we're doing is really having an impact. Now, we have talked a lot since COVID happened about recovery versus rebound, and just, this came from an NWA research study that's very highly held in regards across the nation. When you recover, you are back to where you were prior to the pandemic. When you rebound, you're moving in that direction. So if we look at the data from 2019, which was the last year we tested prior to the pandemic, versus this past year, not only have we recovered in ELA scores, but we have gone way before where we were five years ago. That's a celebration for us. Okay, I'm going to go fast. Nobody's ever heard me say I'm going to go fast when it comes to data, but I'm going to go fast. So now we're going to switch over to math. So you've got the same slide with the breakdowns from last year across the different levels. When we look at math for approaches and above, we can see that we had gains from last year in five of the six grade levels, same with a five-year trend. When we look at meets and exceeds for math last year, we increased students in all of the grade levels. So again, we can, the story we were telling in ELA, we can also tell in math, we're reducing kids who are does-not-meets, and we are increasing kids who are meets and exceeds. That's where the excitement is. Now, I will tell you, this slide looks different, and there are reasons that this slide looks different, and I'm going to leave that to my counterparts who come after me to tell you the why behind this. But when we look at math pre-COVID, so it's 2019 to now, we are actually further behind than where we were. Now, I don't want to ruin it, I'm going to leave it for Mr. Newton to tell you why. Right, Mr. Newton? All right, so we do know that there are a lot of things that happened that have contributed to this. Some of it is the lack of manipulatives used during the pandemic really hit some of our little kids hard. One of the things to keep in mind when you look at that screen, the fifth graders last year on that screen were in kindergarten when the pandemic started. Sixth and first grade, seventh and third grade, eighth were in fourth grade. I don't know if I've ever appreciated elementary math teachers more than I did after the pandemic, because I don't know that we really understood how critical that foundation was until they had a disrupted foundation. That's not an excuse, we still have to get them back. And I'm going to leave the rest to Mr. Newton because he tells it much more eloquently than me. All right, and now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Newton. Oh, you can come up, but walk slow. All right, so SE Ready Science last year, this was our first year with the new assessment. So I don't have anything exciting to present to you. Our fourth graders had 49.3% meets and exceeds, sixth grade 21.3. And so when we're looking at that, that will kind of be our baseline for improvement, and we don't just have those scores available for us, we have stranded data, teacher data, and so we'll be doing more digging into that as we continue to refine those new standards.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Good evening, Madam Chair, distinguished board members, and Dr. Moore. Going back to that previous slide with science, that 49.3% for fourth grade, that is above state average, so although it's our baseline, we are very proud of that, and we are going to continue to work hard to make sure that we continue going in the right direction. You've probably seen some of these practices before, but I want to reiterate that we are maximizing instructional time throughout the school day. Typically, the state requests that 60 minutes is enough instructional time for math. However, in our district, we are requiring 75 minutes to make sure that we're getting everything in that we need, because we truly believe in, starting with the concrete manipulatives first, as we get our lessons going in the classroom. And provide instructional consistency, collaboration is key, and we have also taken that to another level. This year, we have an initiative of PLCs, building our professional learning communities, so we're working hard there, and that would give us more structure, looking at data more, taking a deeper look at our instructional strategies across the board, and so that will be at every level, but especially at elementary level, some of our schools had kind of started earlier, so we're right where we need to be right now. Instructional modeling, our content specialists, our reading coaches, they go in and work with our teachers, they also work with our school administrators, they meet after school, during school, and even attend parent nights, even provide parents with tips as well, but most importantly, they go in and they co-teach with our teachers, making sure that our students are getting what they need. And we also focus on classroom observations. We go in and we observe and we look for, you know, best strategies, we're looking for, or the higher-level questions being asked, and we provide teachers not just with feedback, but descriptive feedback, and we also debrief with our principals to make sure that they're following up and following through as we leave the building. And using high-quality instructional materials, you know, we use the word fidelity all the time, because we want to make sure that we're not on the internet purchasing materials that aren't vetted or evidence-based. So that's very important to us, that we use our curriculum that's first vetted by our state and then by us through our adoption process. And of course, when you think about literacy, the science of teaching reading, that is a real thing, it does work. So we are constantly providing our teachers and administrators and everyone that's involved with professional development in that area. We continue, as a school district and as a state, to go through our letters training, which is a science of teaching reading, it's the why behind what we do. And so that's very important. We're in our second year as a district, and it's very rigorous, and I can tell you, it is making a difference. We will continue with our professional development focused on teaching of the new standards, and we're still learning those standards, unpacking those standards, and making sure that our students are getting what they need. And last but certainly not least, again, we're making sure that science is taught 30 minutes daily, not that it's just taught, but that our kids are having those hands-on experiences and make sure that that learning is cemented right there and that they can apply that in different situations. And at this time, I will transition to Dr. Davis.
Good evening, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Superintendent Moore. So a couple of things that we're going to be working on this year as it relates to improving middle school academics is our daily instruction, ensuring that instruction is 55 to 60 minutes long every day. Also, in terms of, we have high-quality instructional materials that we're going to be implementing across the system, and to assist teachers with delivering that instruction, we're going to be introducing a lesson internalization process where they go through a process of unpacking standards, looking at the misconceptions of student learning as they learn math, because as we know, we have new South Carolina standards, and they're conceptually grounded in conceptual math, and as such, we want to give teachers the tools and the strategies to be able to unpack that high-quality instructional material, as well as to deliver instruction at a quality level so that our students can grasp it. Secondly, I mean, implementation integrity across the system, one of those things that we're, implementation integrity, when we talk about integrity, meaning that we're going through a learning, a system-wide learning walks, to ensure that the curriculum is being taught the way it is intended, and that all of our teachers are learning routines in terms of how to deliver that instruction, as well as how to provide in-time interventions during the class while they're in classes. And finally, professional learning, really focusing on the PD and strengthening how we teach math, because it's different than the way we've learned. So that is, because it's grounded in conceptual understanding, we're used to applying the standard algorithm, and so that's changed now, so we, this high-quality instructional material introduces real-life experiences and asks students questions as it relates to the curriculum that they're learning, and then, once they've learned the conceptual part of that, they begin to apply the standard algorithm next. So it's no longer the procedural math that we learn. Along the same lines, we're using some of those same strategies for ELA, daily instruction as it relates to the high-quality instructional material. As you are aware, we adopted StudySync last year, and as it relates to StudySync, those same processes that we're going to use to unpack that curriculum for math will work in ELA and across all content areas as well. And how we ensure that is, again, implementation integrity. We do consistent learning walks across the system to calibrate where teachers are as it relates to teaching, as well as to figure out where are the gaps so that we can provide high-quality professional learning for our teachers to be able to deliver instruction at a high quality. And in science, the next generation science standards came out. So one of the things I wanted to highlight with our reading the entire slide is that we are going to, we're starting to introduce open science concepts as well as storylines within the curriculum, which offers hands-on opportunities for students to learn, as well as experiments. It's more experimental than sit, get, taking notes, and we know that when students are actually doing the work, they're actually learning. And so those are the strategies for science as well, to improve that 23%. As a former science teacher, it's not a number that I'm proud of, but we're going to move forward with it.
Good evening, board. So they have me here as the closer, and knowing my counterparts, I understood that I would need to be quick. So first thing I wanted to start with is to acknowledge that special education students are Gen Ed students first. And so as we look at this plan, we have to consider that we need to provide the supports in the Gen Ed setting, as well as in the special education setting. So we have really tried to think about intentional data-driven decisions that will help move our students along. And so the first one is talking about co-teaching. So we've now collected a baseline of where all of our schools are with co-teaching and where they fall on that continuum, and from there, we will start professional development on inclusive practices for Gen Ed and Special Ed, because we know we need that partnership of that professional development and allows teachers to meet kids where they are. Next, when we talk about a compliance system, and I know I've said that word a couple of times, but compliance system is a set of structures, processes, and monitoring tools, and what that does is that works with specially-designed instruction to make sure that it's being delivered consistently, right? So it's not a thing, but it is a process that we develop to make sure that our students are getting that support that they need. And the key here is to connect compliance with instruction. So we see our kids doing instruction, so we will develop those systems and those processes so that it will align with the instruction that our students have. We also, again, need to look at professional development at the core and at the modified curriculum and everything in between, right? So we got to make sure that we have our Gen Ed teachers and our Special Ed teachers knowledgeable about that core content and what it means to differentiate for students, too, because remember, SPED kids are Gen Ed kids first. And then also, we will continue to have ongoing reviews of our program structures, and what that means is we will continue to look at our programs to make sure we are serving kids at the right time, in the right place, and in the right settings. I mean, so we will continue to review those, it will not be drastic changes, but we have to look at those to make sure our kids are getting the most that they need.
This concludes our presentation, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we prepare to open up for questions, I just want to point out, when Dr. Davis was talking not procedural math, what he was saying is to us older people, the math is not taught the way we might have learned it, as Mr. Trapp and I experienced when we were doing some visits. This new math is not quite the same, it's the same outcome, but how they get there is different. And I've been educated by a couple of our students of the right way now to do math. And with that, we will open it up for any questions.
All right, board members' questions? Ms. Williams?
All right, I just want to say thank you so much for the work that you all are doing and being strategic in how you are analyzing the data and just being transparent in the process and what are your next steps. Thank you for looking at every area and acknowledging that our special population of students with disabilities, they are Gen Ed first, and understanding that we have to service them with Gen Ed first and then addition to the other services that are being provided. And that is also how we see more success within our students and in our populations. So again, thank you so much for the hard work. We continue to, well, I continue to look forward to the wonderful things that will be happening and coming out of student services. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Porter?
Yep, I too, thank you, and I was really excited about some of the progress that I've seen, and I'm tracking a certain grade levels, too. And so I was watching them, and it's looking good, so I'm really proud of that. I will say that there have been some concerns brought to me from educators, and that's that particularly with our math curriculum, because we've had the recent changes, and I think there's more coming from middle school area versus elementary. There are a lot of elementary schools that had experience with having to engage prior, so they're making the adjustment a little bit easier. And then those that weren't, who came on it afterwards and that don't have that experience, it's an adjustment. And then the questions have been, where are the new resources that make it easier for us to present and work and still keep up with the timeline and stay on task? What, I was trying to search for my words, but the...
Pacing guide.
Pacing guide, there you go. It's driving them crazy, because now they have to make room for creating their new materials to teach throughout the day. And it's one thing to put up the pages of your textbook where it's small. People sometimes think this is so small and so, it's minutia, but it means a lot for the educator in front of the room who wants to quickly throw up the practice question from, and be in order and be able to work, right? But no, they got to stop and move to another screen or move to another resource that they developed on their own so that their kids can work and still keep track of that pacing guide, and there's very little time. So perhaps engage in some conversations with the educators about what could support them in this change, make things a little bit easier in going through their day and staying on task.
Yeah, I'm going to say, I think that's a really good idea, and one of the things that you all did as part of the consent agenda was to reallocate some of those professional development funds for Dr. Davis and his team to work with teachers around that lesson internalization and those pieces. It's a lift, it definitely is, but we have great teachers in Richland, too. I know it can happen.
All right, who's next? Ms. Washington.
So first, I want to say to the teachers, thank you for the incredible work that you do, because what you saw today is a result of the hard work of those that are in the classroom, making all of them adjustments to new standards, new curriculum materials, the highly-quality instructional materials and all of the different things. So thank you to all of our teachers for all of your hard work. Deciding on what questions to ask was difficult for me, because I have a lot of questions, but my questions are more so focused on accountability, because I want to first ask the question of, I saw something about 75 minutes in terms of making sure that we are teaching to that time and we're giving, you know, students and we're committing to that. My first question is, how are we going to ensure that that is consistently implemented across all schools? Because in a recent conversation, it was shared, we have some teachers who are not comfortable teaching certain things, and if you're not comfortable with something, it's easy for you to say, I'm not going to teach to the full... teach to the full amount of time so that our students are getting what they're needing, what they need. You know, we've talked about students not having manipulatives before or during COVID and all of these different things, but the instructional time is important to protect. And I also have to say, what does that look like in terms of accountability for school leaders, that we are not, we are working with our school leaders so that we don't, we don't have 1,000 different things going on to where we're not able to meet that instructional time? So, what are we going to do to ensure that we're protecting that 75 minutes, as well as supporting our teachers during that across the board?
So, I'm going to let Mr. Newton come up and answer the question or respond a little bit more, but I'm going to say this. One of the things that we started doing for the first time in the last school year in 2425 was working with our principals around their master schedules, because that really determines time and everything else. And that is also going to be a major drive with principals this year as we prepare for the schedule in '26, '27. And, and so, those guidelines around scheduling and time for those core classes and refraining from all the pullouts that can happen will be something that we're working with principals on. But I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Newton to share any specific thoughts.
It started this summer. We sent a memo out to the schools with sample schedules with various combinations for the schools and reminding them of, of the expectation. But of course, we go in and we observe, and we check. Well, let me back up for a second. I also sent out communication regarding, we, we have, we'll Google districts, so we have folders for each school. They send all the teachers' daily schedules to me. And our team, we look at those schedules individually, and we give schools feedback, and then we ask them to make changes if necessary. So, we set the expectation. And then, we go in and we observe. And if we see that the minutes aren't like they're supposed to be, we address it with the school administration. At our assistant principal meeting, we also pull some, when they are first sent to us, and we take the school names off of them, we take them through some different activities so they can look for like, quote-unquote, wasted minutes through transition from recess to lunch, because in a school system like elementary, for example, you can lose minutes through transition. So, that's one of the things we make sure that we're not losing. And thinking about the minutes, also, when you were team teaching in the upper grades, you know, you got to time those teachers, hey, when you're transitioning, you got to be in sync. So, all of those things matter, but the most important thing is inspecting what you expect and trusting our leaders as professionals, as they're going to do the right thing for our students. But those are some of the things that we do.
And can I just add with one of the points that Mr. Newton brought up about the lost minutes? One of the, we talked about learning walks, but learning walks are not just for the administrators. They're doing learning walks for teachers, so teachers can go and see other people in that building who are doing what we need to see and doing it at a level. So, now, they have internal experts that they can go to to help them improve their skills and put more tools in the toolbox.
And then, I'm not going to ask my other questions, I'm just going to email them. But I do want to say, I think it will be very important for the Board throughout the year. I, I have heard before, we don't, you know, we talk about the data, once we get it back from SC Ready, but there are so many different data tools that we're using and so many different assessment tools as a district. I would highly recommend that you all keep the Board informed. If, if we're saying that math is aligned and getting us this information and it's giving us data on how students are doing, because we're using the test, I would highly suggest that you all give, share that information with the Board in terms of how our students are making progress, so that it's not always this one report at the end of the, or at the beginning of the school year when we're getting the data back from the state. To me, that is a, we, we wait, that is a long time for a school board to have to wait to get information on student progress. And so, if there's a way that you all are able to communicate with the Board more frequently in some type of report, the superintendent's report, we want to know how our students are making progress in more ways than just SC Ready, because we say it all the time, that's one day, but we're testing math three times a year. We're doing benchmarks that are supposed to be aligned to the state standards for, three and four times a year. So, we're getting the, you all are getting the data, but we're not. And so, that would be my one request.
So, Ms. Washington, if I could just ask one more point of consideration with that request. Formative assessment is for the classroom. And one of the things that I think we have seen start to happen is even when we start looking at that data at the district, it shifts away from being formative to being summative, because it's being used to give reflection to the school. So, I think that the struggle across the nation with formative assessment is, once we give it to the Board, is it really still formative assessment? Does that make sense? Because then, it's, it's a competition for them to try to make sure that their data looks good enough for you. I'm not saying, no, of course, that's not my place, but just something to consider, like, that's my dilemma, like, how do I protect them, but still give you what, exactly what you need? And I think that's what I have to figure out for you guys. Yes, ma'am?
Were there more Board questions? Listen, Mr. Dennis?
Okay, I had a few questions. Well, maybe I only have two, we'll see. I think for me, one of the things that I'm looking at here, and it is around approaches. And I know that we're saying, like, some of our students are, you know, basically because the tests are rigorous, but it kind of reminds me of something my dad used to say to me, if I brought a B home and somebody in the class made an A, he would say, did somebody make an A? And so, I mean, I don't want that to be a thing where we're like saying, approaches where we are, that they still need support is okay. I don't want anybody to think that that is okay. We're happy for the gains, we're happy for all of that, but at some point, it can't just be that that is that, because it's, it's truly not meets, which is why they don't, they may meet in several areas, but if it says approaches, that's very much different from fully meeting it if they still need support in some areas.
So, I'm going to speak to that just briefly. Dr. Moore, I think, wants to say something as well?
Well, you're probably, excuse me, going to say the same thing. And that's around our work to ensure that 80% of our students are in Tier One. Because if 80% of our students are in Tier One, then the students that are receiving that additional support, Ms. Nash, to get them where they are, meeting the standards and meeting the expectation, will be easier for us to do. And so, that is the work that we're doing, that we, well, we have been doing, but we're really pushing, as we've talked about throughout last year, around that 80% in Tier One, for that specific reason that you just indicated.
And I'm, I'm just going to add to that. I'm an A-girl all the way.
Yes, I figured you were.
So, so, that said, I think that, when I think about what we're doing and the 80% of students being successful in Tier One, because we have Tier Two and we have Tier Three, that would be 100% of students right there. Each child needs something different. And I think by sharing approaches with you all today, the point was really to show that we are reducing the number of students that are in Does Not Meet. It does not mean that we're like, oh, we're okay with that. I think none of our principals, I think none of our teachers, I think none of our families think that just the status quo is just fine. When we look at data as a big picture, sometimes we're just trying to give various pieces of that picture, but, Ms. Nash, we have high standards. We are moving in that direction.
Well, I figured that you did, that's why I just wanted to make sure that, you know, like I said, I think for me, I'm glad to see the breakout, because I think there's a transparency for the public that, you know, we're not saying like, that approaches is the same as meets.
Yeah, I think we just, I, I think with this particular presentation, we're trying to show everyone that here is all of it. And you can see on a couple of the slides, we would put Jennifer Coleman, Dr. Coleman did a great job of putting approaches in to show that we made gains last year, but we have not entirely recovered, especially when it comes to math. So, you can see some of that in the slides, but I just want to assure the Board and also the public that is here with us, that no one in Richland, too, has low standards for our students.
Right, which, and that's what I thought. So, I just want to make sure that I expressed that. But yeah, I'm glad to see that it's in here, because, you know, but it is definitely not the same as meeting, but I'm glad to hear that there's support and that you guys have a plan around that. Now, my next question is because I am a North person, and so, if I see something that says implement, my next question is going to be, when? Yeah, a timeline, like, I don't see, for some of these, I can't tell what's been implemented and what's not. And I'm just wondering, you know, if there is a way to find out what the implementation, implementation timeline, specifically around the action plan for SPED?
So, I think that, so I'm going to say that for SPED, and you'll be receiving those monthly Board, the Board Brief, it's related to what's happening with special education, and also, Dr. Moore is building those into our superintendent report. I think that in terms of timeline for some of the other pieces, many of them are already in play. And I think what I can do is work with our team to make sure that we put some timelines and information and some updates into the Board Brief as well. Would that work?
That definitely would work. I'd just like to, I think, you know, Ms. Washington said it, it's, it's a lot easier to know, like, if we get some, like, little updates about where our students are. For me, when I like to see data, I always love it to see it where we were, where we are, and then where we're headed, and then what is the action in the timeline for where we're going, you know, how are, how are we going to get there? And so, sometimes, like, and I know that you guys have a short amount of time to present it, but having that, some of that information along the way would be just really great. So, we have an idea.
Yeah, let's, let's use the Board Brief for that, and we'll come up with something for that.
Yeah, perfect.
And we did use double the time for our presentation.
Well, you know what, we'll give you a little leeway, it's fine, it's fine. Thank you all very much.
You looked engaged.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Board members, anything else on that matter? All right, we will move on to item 12.0. Let's take a look at the draft agenda for the October 14th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, we are officially in fall. Monday was the first day of fall. So, we are in October, next regularly scheduled meeting is October 14th, 2025. Call to Order will be at our standard time of 5:30 PM, followed by the Welcome and Plage of Allegiance, will then move to the Approval of the Agenda, and then move to Executive Session. In Executive Session, we will discuss Student Appeals, Student Admission Requests into the District's Adult Education Program, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases, and release back to Public Session at 6:30 PM, followed by the Inspirational Moment, and then the Consent Agenda, which will include Approval of the Consent Agenda, Minutes from Previous Meetings, Classified Employment Releases, and End District Transfers. Once we've approved our Consent Agenda, we'll move to Public Participation, followed by Voting on Executive Session Items, which will include Student Appeals, Student Admission Requests into the District's Adult Education Program, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases, and as needed for items discussed in Executive Session. We'll then move to Board Reports, which will include a South Carolina School Board Association Region Eight Update, Legislative Updates, and Policy Updates. We'll then move to New Business, No Action Requested. We'll review Policy Proposal for Policy BEA, Live Streaming of Board Meetings, Policy Revision Proposal for Policy GCLE, Unencumbered Time, Policy Revision Proposal for IHAA, English slash Reading slash Writing slash Language Arts Education, and Policy Revision Proposal ILBB State Assessment Programs. We'll then move to the Superintendent's Report, followed by Agenda Items for the Next Meeting. We'll review the Draft Agenda for the October 28th Regular Scheduled Board Meeting, then move to, if needed, Items of Public Participation. Executive Session, Voting on Executive Session conclude with Board and Superintendent Highlights and Adjournment.
All right, Board members, are there any revisions, additions you would like to see made to the next agenda or future agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Washington?
I will, I guess we can discuss, but I do, I just want to go on record to say that I would like for us to discuss the Facilities Policy, because that has been a hot topic amongst the Board and at one of our upcoming meetings. So, I know that we have these proposals here, but we can look at the, at the upcoming Board Meetings to figure out which one that we want, but we would like, I would like for us to discuss that one sooner than later.
That sounds good. All right, we will put that, notate that for future meetings. All right, well, guys, it's not quite eight, but it's close. All right, with that being said, we're item 16.0. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, sorry, Dr. Scott wanted to talk about her shirt. Oh, wait, was I supposed to do the preview? Okay, she didn't realize we weren't doing comments, so I told her, because she wore the shirt, we won't let her disappoint her students.
And thank you so much, Mrs. Nash, for doing that. I forgot that.
You can't take all day, I'm just kidding.
Well, you know, we still have a little time, so I'll go until about 8:20. But anyway, as you, as you can see, that I have on my Muller Road Mustine Shirt today. So, I'm just going to share just a little bit about Muller Road under the magnificent Dr. Brandon Scott and his Mastermind Mustine at Manteen. Muller Road Middle School stands as a model of academic excellence and community spirit, committed to empowering every student to achieve personal and academic success while preparing them to contribute to the advancement of our global community. Guided by this year's inspiring motto, Be Legendary, the school embraces a culture of high expectations and strong staff morale that fuels student growth. Over the past three years, Muller Road has seen a remarkable rise in teacher retention, hint, hint. Talk to Dr. Brandon Ross. A key factor driving significant gains in student proficiency in English Language Arts and Math, hint, hint. Talk to Dr. Brandon Ross. Nationally recognized as both a certified magnet demonstration school and a national magnet school of excellence by Magnet Schools of America, Muller Road integrates core knowledge content with South Carolina State Standards to prepare students for advanced, advanced, advanced. Talk to Dr. Brandon Ross. Coursework and lifelong learning. The school expands opportunity to meet student interests and talents, most recently, the addition of theater and digital art programs. These new courses born, yeah, these new courses born from student demand, hint, hint, student demand. Talk to Dr. Brandon Ross. Enrich an already robust related arts curriculum, ensuring that every learner finds a creative outlet and a true sense of belonging. Students are held to Muller Road's core values, core values commonly referred to as BLIS, which represents behavior, leadership, involvement, scholarship, and service. These core values set the tone for responsible citizenship and personal growth. In every way, Muller Road is leaving a lasting mark on the Blythewood and Richland, too, community by nurturing well-rounded, future-ready leaders, equipped to excel both in the school and in the widely world, and their effects to truly be what? Legendary. Hats off to Dr. Brandon Ross and his Mastermind Mustangs. Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Nash.
You're welcome. All right, that was your Fashion and School Minute. All right, so, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Washington?
I move to adjourn the September 23rd, 2025 Regular Board Meeting.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Ms. Washington, seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? All right, raise your right hand if you are for, in favor, and then, okay? All those opposed? All right, the seven yes, zero no. It's as if she knew. All right, this meeting is adjourned.